Well, welcome to the October 7th, 2025 work session of the Mayor and City Council. The meeting is now called a order. First up, we have a proclamation for Fire Prevention Month. I'd like to have Chief Tobacco and Deputy Chief Hopkins come on up in front.
All right, proclamation Fire Prevention Month. The city of Hagerstown is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living and visiting in Hagerstown, and if fire remains a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and the presence of lithium ion batteries that may hassle devices introduces unique fire risks. Most of the electronics used in homes daily, including smartphones, tablets, laptops, power tools, e-bikes, and scooters, are powered by lithium ion batteries, which have misuse damage or improperly charged and overheat, start a fire or explode. And the National Fire Safety Association reports an increase in battery-related fires underscoring the need for public medical aid on the safe use of lithium ion batteries. And improper practices, including overcharging and the use of off-brand or non-certified chargers who are exposing batteries to damage and lead to fire or explosion. As such, residents are urged to follow three key calls to action. Purchase only certified enlisted products, change batteries in a safe manner, and recycle them responsibly to reduce the risk of battery-related fires. And the proper disposal of recycling of lithium ion batteries help prevent fire-related hazards and reduce fire risks in the home and the community. And first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of fires through prevention, safety education, and community outreach. And the 2025 Fire Prevention Week theme, Charge Into Fire Safety, lithium ion batteries in your home serves to remind us the importance of using, charging, and recycling lithium ion batteries safely to reduce the risk of fires in homes and communities. Therefore, with the support of the City Council, I'm William McIntyre, Mayor of the city of Hagerstown, due to hereby recognizing the month of October 2025 as Fire Prevention Month, and urge all residents to support the many public safety activities and efforts of the Hagerstown Fire Department and its community risk reduction campaign.
Do you do one in the pen?
Yeah.
Three? Eric, will you get in front of the?
Yeah, you want to do that real quick?
He's going to stand right there.
Do you want to get someone first up?
Yeah.
Yeah, let's see. How about we do? We're you at how much? Yeah. There we go. Let me see everybody.
What? We can't see the mayor. Wait.
Okay, here we go. Good smile, one, two, three, four, and one, two, three. Okay?
Thank you.
Hold it longer.
All right. All right, next up, we have community coalition support and funding requests. Mr. Paul Bry and Mr. Jim Purvis.
Good morning, Mayor, Council, Scott, Donna. Good afternoon, glad to see everybody. And we are here to report on this past year's successes and what we accomplished from the Community Coalition, and then talk about the agenda for the 2026 session. And before we do that, we do want to thank the city for supporting this coalition. We're in our 21st year, and the city's been part of this coalition since day one. And as we talk about with this coalition, when we go into Annapolis with one voice, it makes a difference. And so we talk about the agenda as a group, and we go to Annapolis, and then we make our requests, and we have a good reputation in Annapolis for doing that, working as a community. So with that, Jim will talk about what we accomplished this past year, and what we're looking to hopefully accomplish the coming year, which, as we all know, is going to be a tough budget year. But Jim, if you'll walk us through this.
Just a quick recap. You guys have in your packet a summary of what the coalition agenda was last year and how we fared, just to hit some highlights. As far as specific things on the agenda, capital-wise, we got about $70 million. Came from the state. The majority of that was the restoration of $63 million in funding for I-81. I know that's out in the county, but I know the city also has been a big supporter of pushing that highway, and we certainly appreciate that because all that helps as we push for that funding to get that road completed. Some highlights on the capital, the Hagerstown City Visitor Center project, which is over here at Antietam Paper Building, they got $540,000. The Hagerstown site market study on a new public safety building that was requested by the city got their request of $250,000. We were able to get, as legislation passed, to lift the cap of Maryland Heritage Area funding. The city benefits from some grants that they apply for that, tourism grants from the different municipalities have all benefited from that. While we were able to get the bill passed, and that went pretty smoothly, we were surprised that it got vetoed later in the process. So in the end, that's something that they're going to have to come back and revisit this year. There's some other projects there that did not get funded, including some capital for the Washington County Public Safety Building and the Route 11 Bridge Project in Williamsport. And Smithsburg had some pump station upgrades that they're going to continue to work on for several years to go. Another component of what we do each year is what we call our watch list, and these are items that aren't necessarily specific agenda, capital, or operational money requests, but these are items that we ask the lobbyists to keep track of, just in case something pops up that causes concern. Library funding and USMH funding and HCC funding all kind of came in pretty close to as expected. The library was looking for a little more money for the resource centers, which could help with new libraries, but did not get that. But overall, they were kind of happy with how things turned out. The state funding for K-12 education, there were some modest changes in the education funding for the city schools and the county schools. Those had been worked on, I think, with a lot of the superintendents across the state. So that was a workable solution for a tough budget year. Every year, we always try to keep track of any liabilities that the state shifts from their responsibility to our local government's responsibilities. We want to try to keep aware of that. Most of the ones you see in your packet really hit the counties a little bit harder than your municipalities, because they have to do with things like education and some of those retirement shifts got moved out. And Washington County in general took about a $3 million hit there. I believe you guys probably have some Estat costs that got shifted down to you, because I know you could pick up some of that for city taxes, but.
It's minimal.
Minimal.
Mostly county.
Yeah, mostly that's on the county side. So again, not pleasant, but we do try to keep track of that. We also looked at the highway user revenue, which is always a big thing for our towns and our cities, and that, you know, came in as expected. Everybody's kind of afraid to touch that because they know how much political support there is for that item. So we were happy to see that happen and stay in place. There was a couple legislative things that impacted there, and you could kind of see those on your list. Let's see, I guess none of those really affect the city side too directly, but you would see those there and how they kind of fared out. Then there's other capital projects, and I always list these in the packet. These aren't items that the coalition specifically has on their agenda, but they're items that our state delegates work on, as well as just individual entities and individual government bodies. And you can see there, there's some items, the Washington County Courthouse Expansion, which is inside the city, got some money. The Boys and Girls Club received another allotment for the new Boys and Girls Club that opened up. The Meritas Commons, which is their student housing project, got some money. Federal Little League got some money. Those are just a few that are probably inside the city or benefit there. Any questions about any of those? Okay, moving on is our running agenda list that we, Paul mentioned, that the group works on every year. We've been working on this for about six weeks. I appreciate everybody's help and support through this. You'll see the highlight, you know, move us all the items highlighted in green. That means those are projects that the coalition partners felt were going to make the list and things that we would be lobbying for in the upcoming session. I-81, of course, continuing to move forward that project, as well as get funding for Phases Three and Four, so that project could keep moving along. The county had several capital projects, including money for an air traffic control tower at the airport, a transit program expansion out in the west end of Hagerstown, I-7065 improvements, which also involves some of the properties there inside the city. Williamsport wants to keep promoting the need to work on the Route 11 Bridge. And one thing that's new this year is we're trying to follow and track how MDOT is going to prioritize transportation projects. So they have always been looking for a one-formula-fits-all approach to where they could score transportation projects and then kind of rank them, and it helped move up how they get funded. They are experimenting with a new pilot program right now. I know the county has had some discussions with them. I believe Jim Bender has been in on some of that discussions as well, and they're going to unveil something here in the fall and then have to run it through the General Assembly. This is something that concerns us, because as a rural community, if you put too much weighting towards things that benefit mass transit, it can make it really hard for projects like I-81 or any of our road projects to really get escalated up to the top of the list, which can handle, you know, be a little bit of a challenge for funding. So we're trying to give feedback on that along the way. I know our community has pushed for trying to keep the modes of transportation separate. So in other words, take all the transit projects and prioritize those, and then let them compete with each other, and then take all the road bridge projects and prioritize those. But they are not, right now, looking at going that direction. They're still trying to find a one formula that benefits everything. They are trying to, you know, see if they could come up with a formula that shows projects around the state are getting funded properly. So they're, I think they're making their best effort to do that, but I know we still have some concerns in how that's going to come out. So it's something, it's one of those battles, if you lose it, it could hit you for years and on end, as they constantly want to rate our transportation projects, and they come in below where we need to be. In regard to public safety, again, the Smithsburg and the county have some of the public safety training building, and their sewer projects. The other item on your list, it's in yellow, we're going to probably remove that. That just, I was talking to Meritas this week. What we're looking at is we have a crisis center over at the hospital, and there's been a concern that was put in place. The hope for that was as police and EMS personnel pick up people that are having mental health or addiction issues, they could drop them off directly at the crisis center, and that could bypass some of the amount of traffic that goes into the ER, which is always backed up. Right now, there's been some concern expressed by police members and EMS members that they may risk being liable if something happens to that person medically, and that could come back to haunt them. So they want to only go through the ED, which just kind of drags out the process a little bit. We were looking at maybe legislation to help with that, but there may be a solution that's just a matter of filling out a certain form and some paperwork that Meritas is still digging into. But I think that one, in the end, will probably get removed. Talking to Dave Lehr today at Meritas, that there's another fix that our EMS personnel could do to help protect them to, when they feel the need to drop someone off directly at a crisis center. Other items in education regard, the Williamsport Library is finally ready to be built, so they'll be working on that for the town. And HCC wants to improve scholar drive, which is how traffic comes into the college. The Museum of Fine Arts, they had a million five that was allocated to them several years ago as part of that project, but then, as that project was kind of on hold, it got pulled back to the state. That money got pulled back. They want to ask for that money again. That's to help with their expansion project over at the Museum for Fine Arts. And then the city, CBB is still looking for more money for the visitor center. Again, I mentioned the Heritage Area Funding Bill was vetoed. We're going to look at that. And then the city also has brought to us the Fieldhouse exemption from real and personal property taxes, which is getting that included on legislation that helps keep that project from having to pay those fees. That's kind of the two main ones. The watch list are same as in the past, making sure we don't shift liabilities from the state to local government, highway user revenue, gaming revenue, K-12 education funding, higher education funding, and monitor, you know, what's happening with the Museum of Fine Arts expansion project. So that's right now the list. I know you guys have been sent the list each week. Appreciate Scott and his team that have come to the meetings and put in their input. So if there's any questions for that, please let us know. We will hope to finalize, the group did vote on this agenda as our agenda, and we'll be moving forward with getting the educational components together that we used to talk to our delegation on November 5th. And then we've already forwarded this stuff to our lobbyists so they could start strategically planning how to go after money in next session, which is going to be a little bit of a challenge, as we all know. But it's also election year, so you never know how things get handled. And I know Delegate Schinder, Schindler does a good job for the city working down there, as well as the rest of our state delegation. Questions?
Any questions, Mark?
Yeah, just for the legislature, like for the first responders, I know you said that one's going to be removed.
Yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't look like legislation is going to be needed. We had members of our delegation that were willing to, you know, work on the legislation. What they were asking Meritas to do is to identify exactly what that would look like, and we asked them to look at other areas. And David, in talking with our local health department, there apparently is some sort of waiver paperwork that you could fill out, and they're going to go that route instead of needing legislation. So it's basically a problem we think we could fix locally without needing any state ask.
I was asking, because I'm wondering, is, remember last session, I think we talked about having funding to help support first responders or officers that have to stay with the patients? Would that have been to support that?
No, that would have been a different issue.
Okay.
That would have been a different issue. Yep.
May I help mediate some of that?
And then a question for you, Jim, sorry. So for any of the agenda items that do not get voted in, what does that process look like for the next, like 2027 agenda?
Yeah, we didn't have any this year. What we try to do every year is we start with a clean slate, so we don't just automatically bring everything back. We ask for all the partners to throw stuff up on the board, and then we go through and say, all right, everybody get your information, give everybody an update on it. If there's something that you feel, you know, that you're opposed to, again, everybody has kind of the veto power, because this is, this is meant to be unanimous. You know, all the partners come together and say, we're okay on all these. So if there's a problem with one, they're asked to bring that up. We didn't have any of those this year. And the, again, the yellow item was one because we knew we needed more information, and it looks like that's one that will take off. Now, anything can be brought back, and I also say, you know, we try to lock in the agenda in October, so we can all get started. We'd start preparing our paperwork. Eric does a great job helping us with getting the book together every year. We need to get that into the printer at a time. But, you know, we always stand ready. If something unusual pops up that we have to be aware of and shift our focus, you could always do that. So we could always bring, if something that we weren't expecting comes up. A good example of that was the one year in the early part of session, they went after gaming revenue, and they looked at the number, and they were going to try to come and take some of that back to the state. And we were able to move real quickly, because we had a lobbyist already in place who was connected down there, and react to that issue, get a lot of letters of support coming from our local nonprofits, and the committees basically said, stop the letters. We understand now, we'll quit looking at that. So, I mean, that was one of those examples that just came up. But again, we try to do our homework ahead of time, but if something would pop up that we weren't expecting, alls we need to do is bring that back to the full group and run it through the approval process.
Thank you.
Sure.
The rest of this is, again, the reception in January, and you'll see on that last page, it's January 27th, and we bring in vendors from our community to talk to our General Assembly folks who maybe don't come to Washington County or Hagerstown to show them what we're doing. We already have about 25 of our vendors committed to it, including the school system and the county and the city economic development folks are coming.
Community engagement and economic development.
Yes.
That's part of the rec.
Thank you, yes. Yeah, and so we have good support there. We always encourage folks to attend, if not for the whole day for that part. All the partners have committed to fund this at the same level they have in the past. We're meeting with you today, requesting the $5,000 that the city normally does. In two weeks, we're going before the Board of County Commissioners for their request of them. All the other partners, though, have already committed to saying yes. And so that's our request, is to, number one, educate you about what we're doing, and then make the request, so we can continue our support.
We've had the same budget. We've tried to keep that the same. We did take a little loss this year, but we have, we have some money in the bank that kind of covers that. We just lost one of the sponsors that helped with the reception, which is kind of where that is. You know, in time, we may get to the point where we struggle, but our lobbyists just held their fee the same for literally.
Since 20.
Yeah, since we started 20 years. So we were able to keep that. If they ever would bump something up big, that would be probably where we'd have to come back. But we try to live within our means, and Donna at the chamber does a real good job planning reception. You know, we used to have this nice shrimp feed, you know, over there to try to help bring in the legislators, because your goal is to get the VIPs in the room and then have that hour and a half, two hours, to really mingle with them and talk to them one-on-one. You know, and, but we've had to kind of cut back a little bit on what some of this stuff is to try to keep within our budget. But it's been, I think, a great return on investment, and just trying to get the whole community rowing in the same direction. And we get told all the time that we're the kind of example of how community should advocate at the state level. So I know sometimes sitting in the large group meetings, I know a lot of you've been there, it gets a little old, because you're there for three hours, and we're kind of saying the same thing. But I tell you, it makes an impression when one of the committee chairs or somebody walks into a room and they're expecting this kind of little kind of support group, and they walk in, there's 100 people in from Washington County, all there attentive with a book that details our stuff, and they're, they're asking them, you know, their help. And they remember that when the things come across their desk and they're done votes. So I think we've done as good a job, not just getting the money back brought away, but building the Washington County brand and letting them understand that we're a real, you know, player in the state, and we do a good job at what we're trying to advocate for up here. So appreciate everybody's help with that. And by the way, if you come down and you're kind of, we usually stay the next night, because we'll have some meetings in the morning or in the evening. Look for a paw and eye, you know, after the reception, if you're going to stay the night down there, and we'll kind of try to, we've had some good little one-on-one meetings after that as well, occasionally, just informal. And sometimes the best work you do when you're advocating for stuff is, is just that one-on-one over a cocktail after the reception or somebody when their guard's down, and they're more open to what you're trying to push.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have purchase of easement along Antietam Creek. It's Eric Dike.
Hey, good afternoon. So I'm here this afternoon looking for approval for Mayor and Council to purchase an easement across some private property. As you may recall, the city has been working for several years on a waterway access, the Antietam Creek off of Mount Etna Road. This is at the intersection of Memorial Boulevard, Eastern Boulevard, and Mount Etna. The city currently has a waterway access further north on the Antietam Creek, which is at Quanis Park. This would be a second access point. The city is currently underway with Phase One of this project. It's already been advertised for bids, so we'll be getting bids on Phase One. Phase One is on the upstream side of the bridge, which would be a small parking lot and a path that leads to the creek. Phase Two actually connects on Phase One, goes under the bridge, and goes around the weir. So when this is all complete, voters will actually be able to come to the weir, take the boat out of the water, get around the weir, and continue on downstream, or vice versa, up around the weir. On the Phase Two portion, we, during the design process, our property is pretty bounded. It's hard to get around it. And so to design a better pathway, we decided to go through, or wanted to go through private property. To do that, we need to purchase an easement, and that's what this is really about. The purchase of easement across this piece of property, it'd be a perpetual easement. The current owner is Sergey Povvar Revocable Living Trust. The primary owner is Sergey Povvar, and I've spoken to Sergey. We've met with him multiple times, and we came to an agreed-to price of $20,000 for this perpetual easement. And so I'm seeking your permission, like, to offer that. There would be an ordinance, it would have to wait 30 days, it'd be probably early December before we could actually make the deal. And so this will be, basically, is to make a better pathway to the stream.
Any else?
Yeah.
Time's up.
The deal. The second part is that I need your permission to apply for a grant, of which I've already applied for.
Absolutely.
So the grant will actually cover the $20,000 price, attorney fees, appraisal fees. The state actually, by indications, is ready to approve it. We just need to do our part first, and it's been dragged out so long, but it's through the Maryland State Department of Program Open Space, which typically have capital items like playground equipment, that sort of thing, but they also will pay for ground, because the whole project is to preserve open space. And so therefore, they were, you know, county encouraged us to apply. We did, some months ago, and we've gotten word that they will approve it. We just, they're just waiting for us to do our part and actually make the deal.
Is there any argument from here?
Is there a match?
No.
Oh, even better, yeah.
No, there's no match. We wouldn't pay for everything, but we applied for a grant of about $30,000, so it'll cover most of our costs.
Great.
Perfect. Thank you. We already got that.
Yeah.
All right, next up, reallocation, community development block grant funding from FY26 pathways to Wheaton Park Phase Two. Margie Jo.
So I'm back with our formal request to reallocate $100,000 of FY26 CDBG funding from our alleyway repair project to the previously existing activity Wheaton Park Phase Two, which is the band shell and stage. Jim Bender and I were here a few weeks ago to talk about the band shell and the higher-than-expected costs of construction. If you remember, we do already have $100,000 allocated to the band shell project, but the lowest bid that came in was nearly twice that. So we were looking to reallocate some of our new FY26 funding over, back towards the Wheaton Park project. We did finally receive HUD approval of our action plan, so that we can move forward with our required 30-day public comment period, which is open now, and that has an end date of October 20th. So to keep this moving, we did request, or we are requesting a vote at the special session on October 21st, and we'll forward to you any comments received prior to that date. Once approved, we will submit to HUD for their approval ahead of any city action, but we don't anticipate any pushback from them.
Everybody good?
Question?
Good?
Yeah. Great.
Might as well stay here.
We want to maybe stay here.
Community Development Block Grant, Public Service Grant Subrecipient.
Hi. Thank you so much for having us. We're here to request approval of the resolution to authorize execution of our FY26 subrecipient grant agreements. We have 10 awardees under the Public Service Grant Program and two housing-based program awardees. These are the recipients that were presented back in April who are recommended by our Citizen Advisory Committee. So these awards are included in the current CDBG FY26 Annual Action Plan, which was approved by this body on August 12th and by HUD on September 17th. As we were much later than normal this year in receiving approval for our action plan, we're requesting a vote for this item as well at the special session on the 21st, so that we can get the agreements out to the awardees and then allow them to start submitting their expenses for the year.
Any word from HUD with the government shutdown, whether these grants are in jeopardy?
The grants themselves are not. I guess our administration of them is a little bit at a standstill because of, you know, having to submit. It's all on a reimbursement basis, so for us to submit our requests for drawdowns and then that kind of thing, it may be.
Could be delayed a little bit.
Yeah, but as far as the actual funding, we should be good.
it may be a little bit, yeah, but as far as the actual funding, we, we should be good.
Next up, Chief Kiper, the review of code amendments, chapter 79 curfew.
Good evening. I think you have a copy. Yes, you do. And your packet there. Ran this through legal and Jason got this back to us with some minor language changes. He just added some things in the definition section to clarify some of those, those issues. And then as discussed in 79 dash two, we changed the timeframe to be 11:00 PM every day until 5:00 AM the following day. Keep that a little simpler. And then further back, as discussed again, we modified the violations and penalty section under 79 dash five to, instead of a tiered approach for the, for the parents to be potentially fined in this, they would be payable amount of up to $500 as is existing in most other codes that we have in ordinances.
Everybody good with the verbiage on that?
Yeah, this is what we discussed. Thank you for adding, adding the verbiage.
Yeah.
All good? Thank you. Next up, the environmental design of the various hotspots. Turn it over to Scott Nicewater.
Yeah, this was a topic that Councilmember Burnett had brought up in September, I think. I've got here the chief, got Ashley, got Chief Tobacco, got Amanda here, and I've got Nathan Freidinger back there. I know one of the things that we, we would like to understand or get better direction on would be, are there any particular areas specifically that you feel there would be some environmental design improvements such as additional lighting, whatever form that may take as in streetlights or it could be decorative lighting, something to make an area more, more, more visible. Also like to bring up any opportunities to talk about blue lights where we could look to install, kind of like if you're on a college campus and if you have a need for assistance, there's a blue light pole that you could push that would directly connect you to the watch center or to 911. That's another option. The other one that is getting some play around is, would be the implementation of a public bathroom. We know we've had that discussion in the past and, and the, the pros and cons to public bathrooms, but I can tell you, I have seen a group that called themselves the Portland Lou. And they were public bathrooms that were first installed in Portland, Oregon, where it makes it an option as a bathroom, but it does not become one where you can sit in there and, and do bad things within, within the confines of that bathroom. I'd be happy to bring back more information on that. I've seen one of those in operation. They are self-cleaning. They are, the lighting does not allow for the ability for someone to sit in there and shoot up. You cannot see a vein the way this lighting is in there. It, it, it was extremely interesting to see. Winchester has one and I believe Cumberland is getting one. And they're not too terribly priced, but it would be something I'd be happy to bring back in November to, to fill you in on, on how that works. So just looking for any additional ideas you all would have, any specific areas you'd like us to concentrate on. And we could bring back, you know, the budget to do that or any additional ideas or problems we might have in, in, in fulfilling some of that directive. So just wait, looking to hear from you all.
Well, definitely the alleyways. So like the one here on Potomac, the one behind the A and E deck, the alleyway there for lighting, like for additional lighting.
Okay.
Also some of the alleyways on Locust North and South going down.
Some of those we can accommodate on poles, on light poles. Some of them we would have to talk with building owners to put lights up on buildings. Our lights, we'd have to get permission to do that, but we can go through what the light department, and Nathan, correct me if I'm wrong. The light department will do a study, a light study that will show how bright it is in that particular area with the existing lighting and then make recommendations on what additional lighting could be installed. Am I close?
Yeah, we, we have a software that we look at our existing infrastructure, our poles and add lights. And each light has its own light pattern and, and light output. And it'll, it'll kind of lay out for us on a map how much light on average is in a, in a certain area. That's.
We'd also like, also like to look at, instead of just throwing up a streetlight, maybe there would be a way like in the alleyway between museum, between the Fine Arts Council and Brick Tavern. The lighting that's in that area there, it's well lit, but it's decorative. It's not just a standard old.
Right. Kind of like what Annapolis does in their alleyways.
What Annapolis does in their alleyways. Yeah. We'd like to be able to investigate doing some of that too.
I have a few comments, like my, in my memo that I addressed to this body back in July for the environmental design efforts. I'm still interested in having a, some type of grant program where businesses or residential areas could apply to receive funding to help with their neighborhoods. That's one. And two, since we're revamping Operation Take Back, that would be a great opportunity when we're doing these, these walks to identify areas where we don't know right away. But you know, when we're doing these walkthroughs, see if there's, there are alleyways, see if there's any sidewalks that we may have missed in our, in our sidewalk program, any fences that will be good to have and using our neighborhood first programs to get feedback from the neighborhoods on what areas that would benefit from having some type of environmental design that would help deter bad activity and, and make areas more safer. So that's my, my comments.
We could do that a couple of ways. Neighborhoods first, we could look and ask neighborhoods first groups of what their thoughts are on that. Also Brittany and Leah are at the Maryland Main Street Conference and they are also looking at opportunities from other, how other municipalities have done the same thing down there and through a grant program. Yep.
I think, I think another idea would be in some of the alleyways in the, the residential areas, you will find it, you know, when you're, when you're driving down some of those alleys, there, there's a bush, especially during the summer months, it sticks out into the alley. And here's the reality. A lot of times it may be an apartment where that tenant says, you know what, that's a bush at the back of the alley. It's not mine. It's some overgrown thing. The owner may say, eh, nobody goes back there. You know what I mean? And so it'd be nice if we could identify some of those or, or talk to the neighborhood folks that identify some of those that impede travel that, that, that are, you know, allow for folks to, you know, to, to, to hide, what have you. But if, if we can just remove them all together, you know what I mean? And, and look at that because we obviously have, you know, yard waste collection and things like that. So I don't think it would be that big. But it may be a big deal to those neighborhoods to have those removed so they don't impede regular traffic. Because I think at, at time impedes people from even wanting to use the alleys. And I think there's, I think there's this act in the back of the property, nobody sees it, nobody cares about it. But the reality is there's probably a lot of times where neighbors do care about it, but they're not going to come out and be like, hey, you know, I need to tell you that my neighbor John Smith has a bush that I, you know, that it's growing into the alley. It just, it never reaches that level, but people pass and go, man, I wish that wasn't there.
Yeah. Yep. I never was in a place before coming to Hagerstown where alleys were used as much to get from one place to another as they are here. And we have definitely, my alley for one between Pine and Summit is one of those where shrubbery is, it can be an issue. So.
And I'm not a huge fan of the, the speed bumps in alleys. I just think that, that buries traffic into people's yards and I, or businesses and parking lots that I just often question, you know, like what, what real help is that? You're just, you're, you know, you're not traveling at a rate down an alley, you know, that that's required. I think it causes more harm than good. Those are the things I think I'd like to hear.
Would that be very costly for us to have removed or no?
What's that?
The removal of the speed bumps in the alleyways.
I mean, that is something we have to talk about with, with engineering on doing that. I know public safety, especially the fire department, well, and I would assume the cops as well, not big fans of speed bumps as they're trying to get to, as they're trying to get to a fire, especially on Main Street. We've tried to skirt that through traffic comp.
That's correct. The Jim's not here, he's on vacation, but nobody else, engineering, but on the speed bumps and alleys, usually they're only put in if somebody in that neighborhood requests them. And then 50% of the people that live in that area have to sign a petition agreeing that they want speed bumps. So it's not something we just arbitrarily do. It's not something we just put out there. But like I said, 51% signs it and then we put them in.
Right.
But we've also had people, residents in that neighborhood, after they went in, then removed them or somebody did, but it happens. So.
I just think for me, while we're focusing on ways to improve these residential neighborhoods in the front, that we not forget about focusing on things in the back.
That's correct.
That, you know, make it, you know, that impact livability just as much as.
Understood. Yeah. The, the code says that the property is responsible for vegetation to the center line of the right of way. So as such, you're talking about our private property. So we can't just go and tear them out. But some people do call and complain because they're, they're, they're an issue. We usually direct out to code. Code usually talks to the property owners. If they don't address it, then it's addressed, I guess, either through us or a contractor.
We've got a giant magnolia tree where this is cut down in my backyard because it goes under the alleyway too. So, but that's a big problem.
It is. Some property owners planted a tree back there and 50 years later now it's tearing up. So.
Yeah. And the alley behind me, we have a couple of them. And then across the street, everybody just drives around them in the yards, you know what I mean?
Yep.
Next to it, rather than that not happen, but I think that those types of things, you know, even the garage is like, especially some of the alleys in the southeast quadrant of downtown here, you go through and you're like, man, it, it, it just is not welcoming. You know, a lot of people see it, but it's like, you don't know who, you don't know whose it is, what the purpose is, and you're like, you know, it'd be nice if we could address those things as part of that and focus on both sides of the property.
And as always, if you, if you come up with anything else, just give me a text, shoot me an email. We'll get, we'll get looking on it. We'll bring these back in November. We'll bring some action plans back to you in November on addresses, on addressing these. Bring some more information back on, on the Portland Lou public bathroom also.
Yeah, I'd like to hear more on that.
Yep.
Thank you.
Take the business watch today?
Business watch program. That was another one that came up as a way, kind of like a neighborhood watch, except it would be for the businesses downtown to try to establish either through the Main Street program or through the A and E district to develop a, a, just a group that would be able to keep an eye on each other or promote a way to keep an eye on each other and also have direct access towards, to the police department or the fire department, depending on what the situation was. Just to increase visibility and to keep, you know, just keep a neighborly, a neighborly eye on businesses downtown. So if, if that's something you all are, are still interested in, we can start putting that together as well. And I've also got Brittany keeping an ear up down in Easton with the Main Street Conference also on doing that. So if you have any other ideas that you'd like to, to talk about, we can look to see how that organization could be, could be created.
I'm still interested.
Okay. And we'll start, we'll get to work on that.
You also want to take the establishment first time business?
Abs- absolutely.
You want to roll?
It's all, it's Scott.
Absolutely. This has been something that we've advocated for, for a long time. And that would be a way to catch those first time business owners as a way to just get them to understand what they're, what, I don't want to say what they're up against, but what they're facing. Because a lot of people do come in with just, hey, it's just, I could just go in and buy this building or rent this or lease this storefront and everything is going to be kosher and we're going to get up and running. There's a lot more to it. I know in Amanda's group, we have had some very recent excellent success with first time business owners in Hagerstown utilizing Sue Kyler as that liaison between not only the code, the code enforcement, but also permits and inspections. Economic development has also pushed a, a couple of first timers to Sue and Sue has been able to get them through the process of working through what it's needed as far as permits and inspections out of the gate and then code enforcement as they continue to go through, not just for city departments, but also for the health department, the liquor board. Sue has been an amazing asset to have, working with, working with those folks. I know with Juniper Cafe has been one, Brick Tavern has been two. And I think there was, there was one more. Was it Motherland that maybe Sue worked with down South Potomac Street? And it, it really kept them from having to experience some of those frustrations that tend to occur by not knowing the lay of the land. So we can begin to look at, you know, also working with Main Street. And when Brittany's not here, she gets volunteered for a lot of stuff. But we can also work through Main Street. Don't want to just tied to Main Street. We want this city why. So if someone's on Northern Avenue, someone's out on Eastern Boulevard, out on West End, want, want to open a business, Garland Grove, we can help them. And, and the best place, the, the two best places we get that information from is from economic development when they get contacted and they are quick to let us know. And then also when someone puts that, applies to that first permit to want to, to do something with an existing structure, that's a great way also. And we have gotten, Amanda's done a, a great job in starting those channels of communication, opening those up to where we can get, we can get to them before they start putting a lot of sweat equity and financial equity into, into the business. So that forum, we, we would look to establish that probably in the spring when things start to ramp back up again after, you know, after the, the winter season kind of doldrums. But we'll get that set up and maybe make that a quarterly thing to where those that are coming in, make sure we get it good and advertised out there. And try to, try to, to catch these folks before, like I said, before they put too much sweat equity, before they put too much financial equity in to let them understand how things go. And also to help us improve how we do things and improve communication based upon the feedback we get from that.
I think that's advantageous, especially so there's no surprise cost at the end of the project.
Yep.
Can we, is there something we can do to have something in writing with these first time business owners so that?
We could do a checklist. I know we've already talked about putting that checklist together as far as here is what you need to do and the steps that you need to do it in. So that before you can get your, your use and occupancy, you need to know what you need to do to get to that.
We're working on a welcome package, not only with homeowners, but investors and new businesses. So it kind of gives the do's and don'ts, kind of front forward of who to contact, what reasons they would need to pull a permit, all of that avenues. So we're looking at kind of welcome to the city. Here's some contact numbers so that hopefully they reach out before they start doing something.
And you and I have discussed this too as well, as well as make sure we stay proactive as a city, reaching back out to these businesses.
If it permits that too.
Exactly.
I like that.
And not, and not just retail, but also new apartment building owners.
Even regular homeowners. Just kind of been working with Beth and customer service on that. So across, you know, how to sign up for utilities, things like that, bill pay, just a kind of a friendly welcome to the city, hitting different paths depending on who's kind of buying the property and what the property is going to be used for.
That's great. Could I add a recommendation to that?
Absolutely.
Just for like the new businesses, because that would have been nice even for me. Once they get towards like the final steps and they're working on a grand opening. Something that I looked for was like, who can help me with balloons or, you know, decorating? Is there anyone that can help me locally with the marketing? So knowing that we have individuals in this community like Hagerstown Beats, who does an awesome job and actually shows up to almost all of our events or Menagerie events. Or Menagea events, I mean, Menagea events for uh, balloons. Could we have like a section that has like local downtown partners or maybe like recommended? Um, you know, just for the, just for those new businesses in particular.
I know we've been talking to Brittany about some extra resources to be included in that, like not only for when you're getting started, but to carry you through. Um, so definitely, yeah. And we can work with economic development on that also.
Thank you. That's a good idea. Thank you.
I like that you put it as a forum because this with the businesses, this was something that was on um, my uh, plan as well. So um, I think also incorporating different workshops. Mentorships for first time businesses so they understand and the checklist was also something I even said with. So everybody understands that, like that what comes, what what you should do first. So you're not kind of like all over the place like I was. Did everything backwards. So this is, this is good. I like this.
All right.
No, this ties together. Did did I do that on purpose with the agenda?
There's a method to the man.
Because the first time business forum ties into a business watch, having.
Yeah.
Each other, having businesses look out for each other, also ties into any environmental designs that's identified. Before the opening up um, that we can look into. Um, I think this is, this is great. This is, this is. What we've been asking for, having more of a customer service approach when doing business in the city. Uh, I think this this nails it.
I think organizationally, we've now got ourselves positioned to be more proactive on the customer service side.
Yeah.
And uh, and yeah, we're we're excited about it. It it, we've had some. You know, I will say there've been some growing pains and some some change pains. But uh, we're working through those and and I think you're going to see a big difference.
I would like to hear more about um, Sue and her new position and hearing how that's going like as a as an agenda item like.
We can have her come in here to work session, I'll let you know.
Because I know we mentioned before when we did our goals, like having each department come give like a brief highlight of what's going on. Because most times people come, you know, department comes to us for issues or need approval for funding, but I would like to hear about the the good things that's happening. So I would love to hear from Sue.
Sue would love to do that, wouldn't she, Amanda?
Yeah. Also feel like it's uh, important to keep an eye on the businesses that maybe aren't doing so well and see how we can uplift them and help them. And even if it's just, even if it's Brittany going to them and saying, hey, what do you need? Like, what, how can we help you? Do we need to promote you more? Do we need to have an event or something like that?
And Jill Steph does a good job. Chris Dumberling um, uh, does a great job in uh. Not only in following them through and he doesn't just drop them. You know, the thing with a lot of times the sales, as soon as the sale is made, they're on to the next sale and they just, you know, it's somebody else's problem. That's not how these guys work because they like the relationship building. And Emily Conrad also is another one when it comes to the grand openings that she she helps to work with. So absolutely, we've. We're we're trying to to get more FaceTime uh, with the businesses. Not only those that are, not only those that are struggling, but also those that are successful because they they have a story to tell also. That may benefit those that might be struggling.
I did have someone ask um, and Chris, I'm not sure, do. Like if someone comes to you and needs to know what spaces are available, whether it be downtown or just anywhere, do we help with that? Because I know anybody can come to you and and, you know, want to get the process started, but are you, do you also help with uh, available space like? To keep them aware of available spaces?
Our department does uh, work with property owners for listings that are publicly available as well as maybe off market. Uh, we talk to business owners, prospects about what they are in need of, whether it's office space, retail space, industrial, doesn't really matter. Uh, from small mom and pop corner store to your web stands essentially. Um, our department's all over that when it comes to site selection. We're not industrial brokers, we're not uh, anything along those lines, but we make those connections essentially. And especially making sure whatever their needs are, we are finding space that fits that criteria. Uh, and getting them connected with people who may have something in um, that fits those kind of needs and everything. Um, and then we go one further about what programs that we have as a city that can be applicable for any given space as well.
I still um, feel we should have um, maybe something like a directory. Um, like maybe somewhere down in the square where it's kind of like, I don't want to say a billboard, but you know, one of them, you know, when you go to the mall, you can see what's all there are the outlets. And then everybody's kind of aware of what businesses are downtown, whether if you're coming down there to eat or. I know I know they can go online on the Facebook page, but.
I was going to say, we do actually have a list of available properties, uh, directory on our website of our available properties via Zoom Prospector is what it's called, State of Maryland uh, website.
No, I mean like businesses that are already open and operating.
Businesses that are already open and operating. Uh, there is a business directory that Brittany Arismendi has started. It's on. Uh, the Main Street, the downtown Hagerstown website as well. Um, and all of it is uh, voluntary. Uh, for whatever the business owner would submit themselves uh, versus uh, inputting information that may become inaccurate.
Cute music.
Too soon. Thanks, Chris. Twenty days to work.
But now we've, and we've also had, we had a kickoff today or yesterday. Uh, of of a new GIS initiative also that we're going to also look to um, expand the ability such as potentially a kiosk like on the square.
That's what I mean, like where you could walk up to it.
Where you could do an interactive.
Vobity or oh, you know, any other businesses that, you know, in case somebody doesn't have access to social media right then or if they're visiting.
Have it right there. Put one down in Meredith's Park, we can put one USMH, University Plaza, that, yes.
Love that idea.
Yep.
Or even coming into Hagerstown.
Yeah.
Something really nice, visible.
Because a lot of people get to the town and they're like, where's a good place to eat? You know, you can list them all, but it's nice if they already have a visual of it.
That's right.
Okay. Nice, but not least the trick or treat. Mr. Scott, nice morning.
Hello, Eric. So. Yeah, perhaps uh, one of the most, you know, you would think tax rate or water sewer rates. Um, would create, would create uh, community concerns. There is nothing like trick or treat night. To make the community um, go to social media and just go rampant. So I just want to to read the following. It is suggested that families trick or treat this year in the city of Hagerstown on Friday, October thirty first. From six to eight, in order to give your friends, motorists and public safety an idea when to expect pedestrians and visitors at their door. Participation and scheduling is entirely up to each family. Since trick or treat will not be scheduled or managed by the city. The city will not reschedule or suggest a rain date in event of inclement weather. Moreover, it's perfectly acceptable for folks to opt out and not participate. We ask that each family determine what is best for them. So October thirty first from six to eight. Will be the designated time for trick or treat in Hagerstown. Every, everybody. If you don't want to do it that night, you're in an HOA or you want to do it. Go at it, have have at it. If it rains, snows, sleet's or hails. There is no rain date for trick or treat. You either go or you don't on October thirty first.
This is Scott's most fun statement to make every year.
Every year.
He looks forward to this.
And it's the one I get the most emails about every year.
Every year.
Every year.
Why? You're kidding.
Because no one's never sure.
Because if you remember, we had a, we had a blizzard on Halloween. What, quite a few years, yeah, a few years ago when they postponed the Mummer's Parade.
Oh.
And we were inundated with emails and phone calls, when is trick or treat going to happen?
Whenever you want to knock on somebody's phone.
So this is, this will be put on the website, there'll be a press release. October thirty first, six to eight.
Yes.
On a Friday.
Pay attention, it'll be on the website.
It'll be on the website. We'll have it on social media. Uh, there you go. All good.
That means no knocking.
City administrator.
All right. Um, just several things that are going on in October, uh, especially with Parks and Rec. Um, City Park Ghost Tours start this Friday, October tenth at the Hager House. And the new haunted train tours at the City Park Train Hub also start October tenth. Take a tour Fridays this month. Free registration is recommended. Also, uh, there will be um, a beginner paranormal investigation. Um, event from six to nine at uh, the Hager House. That is twenty five dollars a person. The Hager House Ghost Tours are five dollars a person. They last an hour. Uh, next, community yard sales Saturday, uh, October eleventh, seven to two at Fairgrounds Park. Uh, there'll be a par four pink golf tournament this Friday, October tenth at noon. A few spots left out at the uh, out at the Greens, Hamilton Greens. Uh, Harvest Hoedown at Fairgrounds Park this Saturday, October eleventh, eleven to three. New this year cowboy line dancing lessons. Kids will receive a free pumpkin while supplies last. Uh, trick or treat uh, drive through, or wait, well, before I get to that one. Voltage Wrestling will be at University Plaza again on Saturday night. I know that's uh, Delegate Schindler is one of his uh, favorite events and I think he even got in the ring last time. Uh, that is on October eleventh at five o'clock. So that's always a fun time. Trick or treat drive through at Fairgrounds Park, uh, otherwise known as trunk or treat. Uh, Thursday, October twenty third, four to seven. Uh, drive through the park, receive lots of candy and enjoy live entertainment along the way. And last but not least. The Halloween Dog Costume Parade, Saturday, October twenty fifth, eleven to one. Walk the red carpet with your pup and win great prizes.
That's all my favorites.
That is, my dog won.
Yeah, my dog won.
My dog won, my dog won. God love her. And then uh, Mummer's Parade is, Mummer's Parade is that night also, I think the twenty fifth. So yes, that is all for me. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Flaherty.
Yeah, I took a nap this Saturday and I heard a big loud bang on my door and. I saw seven firemen with a giant fire truck outside my house and I was freaking out thinking something's on fire and they said they're just making sure folks have some. Smoke alarm. So I'm glad that you all did that and uh, you know, I was a little freaked out. My porch and thought something was on fire. So.
And you had to interrupt a nap too, didn't you?
Yeah, and they interrupted the nap. So it was good. So that's all that happened. So.
Councilwoman Burnett.
Nothing tonight.
Councilman Asher.
I have two things. Um, we have a little bit of time. Uh, I would try not to take long. And it may not all come out uh, exactly right, or at least exactly as it sounds in my head. The first thing is. Uh, you probably uh, saw me vacate the meeting a bit early uh, last Tuesday. Uh, I can't help but to express some frustration. And I've had this in the past. I think there was at one point in the past where I recommended the council not even have public comment at all. We went that way for a few months and it it's sort of not fair. I get it to to folks that do want to come up and make comment that are uh, on items that are germane to city business. But last Tuesday, we had a public meeting. It's our meeting at the end of the month and um, we do. We allow for public comment at that meeting and and rightly we should on things that are germane to city business. But we spent about a half hour on the city business that we have before us to conduct that evening. And I have to tell you, at about forty eight minutes into uh, public comment on a multitude of things that had nothing to do with city business. Uh, I think I had had my fill for the evening, uh, you know, from from that setting. Uh, I'm always happy to listen to folks. I don't care, and I've said this forever, whether it's, you know, uh, in this meeting. Uh, on the phone, through website, show up at my front door, you want to talk about something associated with city business, please do. Uh, I am more than excited uh, most times to talk about those things. Uh, but if you want to come in here and you want to use that time that we provide. To talk about things that have nothing to do with city business and that in my opinion, in some cases uh, are a skill. Of Robert's Rules of Order, which we all agree in this room to be governed and abide by. Um, I just don't have uh, the capacity for it. You know, uh, I want to say indefinitely in those settings. And I just wasn't sure, you know. Uh, how much further uh, we were going to to allow that to occur. I did go back and I watched the rest of the meeting. I would say that Councilmember Burnett, your your comments were probably more kind than I had uh, in my head to make at that time. And so I felt it best if I just. You know, was not a continued participant uh, in that and say things that I'd rather not say, you know, at the end of that, you know, a cooling off period. Um, so I'll just say that uh, to this body. And I feel like that that occurs probably to some degree with each administration. The second thing that I wanted to say is there's been a couple of releases, uh, public releases, press releases, whatever you want to call them. In the last couple of weeks and and I remember Councilmember Lou Metzen, they're sitting in that seat. Before he left office and and on more than one occasion, as uh, social media became the giant uh, that it is. His remarks were very clear. I- if we are going to govern by social media, we might as well pack it up at this table uh, and and not show up. Because it does no good uh, to the public uh, to govern in that way. And so you had a release uh, uh, last week of an ethics inquiry. Uh, which in my opinion, uh, absolutely, and I said this on one oh three seven yesterday. Anybody that that, you know, feels uh, the need to to do so, absolutely should should participate in that process that we afford. Uh, folks to do that because that is the quasi legal process that we provide, um, that avenue uh, to occur. However. When you. Proceed to do that. Through social media, you're doing it for two reasons. One, you're doing it because you want to see how many clicks and likes and comments that you can get from people. Uh, to build your political ego. And two, you're absolutely demonizing. The court of public opinion upon that person which you are making the inquiry or complaint of before there's ever the opportunity for that due process to occur. That is not how we should govern. The second occurrence was this press release from an individual from Antrim Township. On a matter that I got to tell you, I don't think we've yet discussed even at this table. Uh, about the location of some activity of some private business somewhere out in the county. Among private parties that we've had no party of discussion uh, to proceed in to date. And I go on in Facebook and sure enough, it's there on that person's page and he wants to see how many clicks and likes. And 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 folks he can rile up with the pitchforks uh, before there's ever the opportunity to have that discussion. Instead of, instead of as a governmental uh, employee, just as I was asked the question yesterday, what would I do? Because I manage a small town, what would I do? The first thing I would do is I would contact my fellow. Uh, governmental city official and I would verify the information. I would verify it. None of that, none of that was verified and all it did was rile up a bunch of people and have a bunch of. You know, people that I consider friends, contact me that happen to live in those neighborhoods and say, hey. You know, what are you doing over there? And I'm like, I I I don't know uh, what this i- i- is really in reference to. And it was for one purpose. It was for one purpose. It was to to use your governmental position to govern by mob rule of social media. We cannot do that. We will never, we will never bring the two halves. Uh, you know, uh, that seem to be growing further apart politically. Uh, in this society, back toward the central node of of productive conversation. If that's how we're going to deliver and that's how we're going to receive our information. As both the folks that deliver it and the folks that receive it. You have a responsibility. To deliver that information in a responsible manner to the public that you serve and you have a responsibility as the recipient. To check that information and verify its correctness. We have diverted from that path and I just, those two things in 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 the last uh, week or so. Uh, have given me some frustration that I think again is difficult to sort of sit and put into words in a manner that I want. You know, uh, people to 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 understand and accept and and not see me as some tyrant sitting here saying, hey, you know. This is what you need to do. It it it's not that at all. So, that's my comment. It's not that at all, so that's my comment.
Councilwoman Anderson.
I just wanted to congratulate our new restaurant that just opened up, the Brick Tavern, Juniper Cafe. I actually just ate there this, what, two, three hours ago. Brunch was amazing, even though I had it at like two o'clock. A little bit of back to what Councilmember Al Shire was touching up on, I just had a comment that I wanted to say, and it's pretty much straight to the point. It's just a reminder that when things are voted on, I just need the public to remember that we are voting on it as a body and not as an individual. So when we are saying things online and social media and, you know, calling out certain council members and saying that the city has enacted a decision based on that sole member, that is completely false. We make moves as a body. That is kind of like the one comment that I wanted to bring attention to tonight and that's all I have.
Councilwoman Bell.
I just wanted to congratulate also the restaurants that opened. Juniper Cafe had an amazing soft opening. Leaving there Saturday and driving down the street and Brick House Tavern was lit up and it was so many people in there, it was so good to see so many new restaurants open and really flourish. So it definitely goes back to our business topics, you know, just continue to support the downtown businesses and continue to help them, people, support people, and that's all I have this evening.
Councilman Al Shire, I swear to you, read my mind. Those are the two subjects I wanted to tackle as well. I, I've said it since last November about keeping it to city topics when citizens comments, as well as please keep it to three minutes. I don't feel if, I mean, I don't feel that you should take more than three minutes if you have idea, a solution, a brief, whatever. I think you can keep that within three minutes, especially when your time is right there on two television screens and it's easy, you can easily see it as well as a timer that's banging at the, at the very end. You can look over there and see 30 seconds and you can go ahead and be respectful and figure out a way to wrap it up. I would encourage everybody that, the next time to please do that. The other thing is too, is, you know, you look on and you see citizen comments, news outlets, other municipalities jumping the gun on certain things, not getting the whole truth. Councilwoman Burnett and myself tomorrow are doing the same thing at the Chamber of Commerce event, and I have a whole list of truth and myths. And please, like Councilman Al Shire said, reach out. Reach out to us and find, find the truth and see where we're at on certain things before you blow it up on Facebook and get everybody riled up. I mean, the amount of emails that are coming in on certain subjects is just flabbergasting. I'm like, wow, we, we're, we're in an infancy stage on something and it is blown out like it's already happening. And yes, please, please reach out to us. And that's all for me. Do I get a motion to adjourn? You got a second? Want any discussions on anything since this evening? Okay, we're adjourned.